Judy Nelson?
Here.
Tom Coombs? Emily Lee?
Here.
Andrea Anderson?
Here.
Aaron Tavon?
Here.
We'll stand for pledge. All right, comments? No, yes, comments? Lost my place. Comments by visitors?
Can you all hear us? Someone's present at the RIA here. I may ask for permission for comments when I get to the action hour about the school calendar, depending on what's given in the court. Before final approval?
Okay.
Not right now, so I just...
So you're giving us notice that you may want to make...
That I may ask for permission personally here.
On behalf of the SCAB?
The RA, yes.
Any other comments or questions? Comments? All right. For the consent calendar this evening has on at the non-public session meeting on 13th of December, our school board minutes on the 13th of December. Meeting we had on January 2nd to...
Ratify it.
Ratify, add it back. And enroll, what is the project?
All right, so the motion is to approve the consent calendar?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. All right, we are under announcements and communications, and first on our list this morning is meeting with Charles Puckett, our district moderator. So Charlie, why don't you sit over here, if it's comfortable for you, just slide your chair up here.
Yep.
So can we just provide you a copy of the warrants? And we'll go over them with you.
All right.
But are there any comments or thoughts you want to share first?
No, I wanted to get feedback on how we can run the SBD2 meeting and whether there are any changes you all want to make, either the setup or the...
I think that the setup is going to be pretty much the same. I believe that we are leaving the projection board, we have the smart board on the stage, though it's not going to be down on the floor.
It's easier to leave it on the stage than...
Yeah, and as long as the font is big enough.
I think it would fine for that.
I was not in the audience, and I couldn't read it that well, so I was...
Really, pretend to tell it to the audience.
But I see it in the audience.
People who sat in the audience, but they see it the same, will be the same side as that.
I think it'll be easier on the stage than on the floor, because on the floor you can't feel good.
So that's... So it'll be behind, essentially. And so it'll be the speaker's podium, as you saw earlier, the speaker will always be facing the audience. The budget committee will be on the side, usually have it on that side. So seats will be on the left.
But there isn't any...
So a couple of tables will be on the seats.
And this, I say you staff also on the side or on the other side?
Um, I think, uh, we're in the past, we were on that side last year.
Yeah.
So it's...
And we'll have our turn here.
Yeah, so the SAB staff will be there closer to you.
Yes, this is one of my other questions, David. You don't think that, like, you know, you should, like, you know, I press, sometimes want to introduce themselves to me, sometimes they use that one.
And so sometimes never know which one is coming.
Right, we don't always know who they have available, so...
And hopefully one of us will be here early enough to introduce you to counsel. So one of the things that we wanted to discuss with you when we were here is we had a... We wanted to discuss inviting the union to speak, if they would like to. So we wanted to make sure, when I say you felt a lot more, we have our board discussion about that, on, you know, we've been through negotiations, we reached an agreement, that both parties agree to, and think about allowing them to have an actual opportunity to speak if they'd want to.
So I'll answer a question, the question, you picture the unit making, having a designated representative to add a particular point in the meeting, you know, when we get to that warrant, our stand-up, present a side, and maybe field some questions from members.
That's the way I was thinking of it, but it was a little tommy.
Yeah, I think that it would be good, especially, you know, really talk about the nuts and bolts of the particular warrant, you know, and go into why they feel this is a good thing. And I think in the past, they rely on us to do that, and I think it would be a good number of meetings in which why they feel that this is beneficial for the contract, why this is a good contract. And you really need answers on that.
So under the current modering, if non-residents can't speak, as we mentioned before, I should have reread my past rules, but I think the way we handle it is unless there's an objection, non-residents can speak, that makes it easier for SABU staff to speak.
Yes.
I guess my, I'm open to persuasion, but my current preference would be to have a single point in the conversation where now is the time for the union member to speak and to maybe respond to some questions from before, but not have, like, often what happens is speaker one comes up from the floor and presses something to the school board, and then the SABU superintendent or the principal responds, and then speaker two comes up and the SABU and the principal respond. I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure that the union should have the status of after every speaker, they get a chance to respond.
And let me be clear, we are discussing this now, and as a board to decide over the topic. They have, the meeting has not been invited yet, but they're deciding that they see people that aren't in the room, so they can continue that. And if that were, if you do do that and they accept, you're thinking that you would definitely hope that they would name our president, and that that name would be on this, that you would be in the beginning of the votes that we will be identifying who are non-residents to speak, at that time.
We don't have a long one, and I think this is your probably the biggest warrant article I have been, of course, I guess it's your biggest question, so getting, helping voters to be fully informed and to have the position of the union as well as the board and the SABU staff on the ground, if that makes sense.
And what first of all, how do we feel about that, and continue into the, to the public council?
Again, again, they haven't been invited yet.
They, they...
I think that, as I said, given the opportunity to showcase, you know, parts of the level warrant, and maybe some places in question, you know, for...
I just have a question, because I haven't been here in a little bit of a second. How have you presented each warrant article? Have you split it up between board members, or has one person done it, or how have you done that in the past?
We've pretty much had one. This is one of our shorter, sort of ones, and we don't, we don't, we don't have any outside, so this is your other, other part, on purpose. So again, it all depends on, because people usually, my name, has to be...
Do you want the same presentation, or do you want just the warrant articles up there?
Just the warrant.
Okay, so you don't want all those other function code details? The same thing I presented?
Yeah, it's good to give a little bit of the rationale. Then what if we do everything?
It's really easy off the top of the head, although, turning to the superintendent's question, typically, GBS, the board chair, has presented the warrant articles. The select board has a different practice, and I'm happy with either practice, so the select board has rotated warrant articles for the, so in deliberative session, we don't vote to put the warrant article on the ballot, because by law it's going to be on the ballot. And so it's, there's kind of a process for me to say, this looks like we're at the end of conversation preparation on warrant article one, now we're going to present warrant article two. My strong preference is to have somebody from the board who can understand warrant article, but I tend to have SABU staff and, along with the grade school staff, to present also as appropriate, if you have the selected piece. But that initial discussion, maybe you'll try to have a number of board presenters, and it could be, it could be chair, it could be anything.
We have done that, and so I think we can be introduced, I hope we, the person that has the government job, presenting, I think it could be introduced, Sean, Brad, whatever, and, and, um, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, you want to do a spot?
Yeah, I think we're in town meeting.
It's better than having town...
Training the SABU as the experts, but not having, what I say, shoulder the load for the board. I think it would help you with the voters.
I could be on the elected officials.
And it's not too late for there to be a continuation of our leadership, but it might be helpful to have some other people help to present warrant articles in this meeting, so it won't seem like a whole new one, an extra meeting, or change.
I think that's an excellent idea, and I think it's... And it's something that we can discuss a little bit more, since it's our last meeting before our deliberative session. It would make sense to me that... Just comfortable, because you're...
Yeah, okay, like that.
The operating, the operating question. But we can use the same slides, we can use two rows, it would be comfortable to present the collective, right, and with Tom, who will be the negotiator, or, and Jeff, who will be the negotiator, who will be the warrant article? And again, on the bottom.
That's well, that's a well taken, Charlie, I think it is important for elected officials to start there.
Yeah, years ago, there was a little bit of controversy about non-residents speaking. I think the controversy was not about the board, because the, because the, because the municipal association talked to me, what I like to learn about you and the moderator, most accounts of the law on residents, particularly experts, subject matter experts, to present. Our practice has been pretty, pretty formal, pretty little about law, and law enforcement citizens have been very excellent.
Charlie, in the past, what I've normally done is hand the moderator a list of people that are from out of town that may be speaking, meaning superintendent, the business administrator, if the, if we invite the union to speak, the president of the union, if they should be an out-of-town person as well, and that, that would be what the body would approve, rather than a blanket statement of anybody from out of town can speak.
But it also, that's a great idea. Another thing it helps with is it helps the clerk get a clearer record, because my hearing is, what used to be my ability to hear and guess the pronunciation of first and last names is not that much stronger, it's getting worse.
So typically, that would be the superintendent, business administrator, special ed director, the lawyer, Rich, and again, if, if the union has somebody who'll front on that, and then that would be, that would basically be the list for the body to...
That's mine, and the, so we can do it as a list. The way it works is that the body, a single member of the body could, and it could, we could get to the first three non-resident speakers, and when the fourth stands up, somebody can say, "Hi, Jack," and then I would just call for a vote.
Right.
It would be majority rule of the body, instead of, you know, a lot of non-residents to vote. But I like having a single list, and he can then ahead of time, get it out of the way, and just clarify for the clerk, so...
So two items, and I know the moderator, Rich, as well, the school board has been , I think, always, like, a little bit, with a lot of that. And the other item that I have written down, but Charlie mentioned clerk, we do not probably have elected a clerk as left half. So we don't want, we don't want to have a clerk, so we have to, we have to find a clerk, someone who will take the lead, and so I guess we'll probably try to get something up on the website, and see if we can sort this out forward to that. So we, and we'll discuss it a little bit later on, discussion, the call for you to not, if you can't appear, and I have a suggestion, maybe we can, a little bit more, a more meaningful amount to the work.
I mean, help one of your former clerks, so, and she will throw books at me if I say her in public.
They don't.
If you share a private.
And please don't, if you would share that privately, that would be excellent. Or, or if you know them well enough, contact.
I think, yeah, I think she...
All right, we'll go no further with that. Now, Charlie, one other thing that we do need to go, we're not quite done here, is that there is one petition warrant article, but not the last day. It is, it's advisory only, and it can't be changed at the deliberative session, though we will change it, it's advisory only, and it's very deliberate, so I don't, I don't have any questions on it. If it's the last one, it's article nine, to, 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 ten. Oh, sorry, ten.
So I see it's a new form.
Yeah.
I did that on purpose, so that it would stand out, but it didn't work.
So the...
And so I assume that you will ask for the petition list?
But knowing who the petitioner is for the kind of, it's been pointed out to me that, that, yeah, the first name on the petition isn't necessarily the...
There are multiple pages to a first name, so, I don't know if we know that, I don't know if we know that.
So, and we don't know who the petitioner is, so, I think it's delivered to the SABU.
Yeah, that makes life a little bit more interesting. I, my preference is to invite the petitioner to choose the protection system, and have those, a lot of petition, the same right to process, to present their case for, for the warrant article, that I provide to the school board, the SABU. So if I can identify who the petitioner is, if they're comfortable, I can maybe ask for dates, how, how does I improve, how, you know, glass, or, I'm not sure I know, if there is a problem with that.
Right, and he, it has been, did, she use the process, or has her...
I need help to her, I have not, right.
So she does have, she has the list of all the, just, just, okay.
Okay. And certainly, formerly, if you have a sense that you might have been, might have been also in favor of the article, or the petition, they sometimes say, "No, I'm not, I don't mind, I'm the spokesperson for the warrant article, but I'm, I'll show, I'll sell."
Yeah, I think it's probably best to check the board, I mean, if anyone sitting here knows, or seeing me here knows, what was just on the note, that they would, certainly if they want to have a presentation, they could be involved. All right. Other things we can comment on, I think, that will fall into my, that's pretty, Charlie.
So, coming in, I might, as I said, typically have five, so we have five that we started up, and the board said, in the last couple of years, we've had students from the grade school, in us in the pledge, and let's introduce them, and that's, you know, let us highlight the, what it is that the school, the school warrant really is intended to serve, that's not a requirement, you know, if you're a principal, or you're a class, that's okay, but I wanted to ask what the preference was.
I think it's wonderful that the students get involved, and we need, we need help from the principal to identify, to try to identify these students.
It would be one, or it would be two, three, five, however they feel most comfortable.
Sure.
Sometimes it's going to go to the president of the council, or the executive board, the supercouncil, and that really could be, really could be a fight. And having made it, this very short introduction. I don't know how the school board feels about this. Does the board want anything in particular done, to work on, to, how that is served to the public, or wants, let me say a few words, you know, in this, on doing the end.
I think it's very important for you to say a few words, because certainly, I think that's probably, you guys are, but this is the first major public meeting since you have gone.
Public, like, that he had been moderator for, the school has been for a long...
An incredibly long time, I've had, incredibly long time, I've had. I guess if someone was feeling moved to, you know, send it to, 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 to say, and I, 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 I think I take that with me, as a, because I also, sort of, in every post-election I took in the public vote, back in the days when it was all favorable, it's all bad.
And believe me, that by the end of the deliberative session, voters have heard more than enough, so if something else wants to take the lead on that, I'd welcome that if you...
No, I will, you know, I will, I will, if it allows anyone else who might just...
And would that, as a preamble, or under public business?
What do you think fits best?
See, my, my legal self says, under other business, my emotional self says, "Yeah, we should talk about that." Whatever.
The problem would be, well, if we wanted to, that's all, I think we can get off that. And thank you, that's very, very, much, lots of...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, you're a right, that's a long, 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 supercouncil. For some of you, this is apocryphous, and it for me, it's an exercise in particular, because I don't remember all everything that's in my moderator's book. Does anybody remember anything that they didn't like about moderator's books, publication disappears, haven't changed much? They're tended to be short, but I can't get anything short from everything. It's an open invitation, as we go through the meetings, both the town deliberative session and supercouncil deliberative session. I don't think my moderator's book will ever change much, I think, as a municipal association seminar, this, we can't, I'll see if it needs to change, but I don't, I don't think anything needs to change, if this is something that we're, 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 yeah. One of the tricky things in SBDs meeting is the extent that you can, that is, generally, I play a lawyer in daily life, but not when I moderate, so I'll refer to this SABU attorney on that, but if I can say something, I'll also, and it's unfortunate, because there are a lot of pieces on what can and can't, how a warrant article is going to be, and what not. So one of the, one of the moderators who really do this is, is I will walk up and say, "Please, right now, I'll have, I'll have these, and these, and this," and I'll call. It's unfair to, for it, to try and capture it, and because of the real likelihood of legal challenges, we get something off, and pass them.
Yes, and that has been a, 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 a...
If anyone would end up arguing, I don't think we need a supervisor's table cards, ballots, or ballot box space, because...
If someone asks you for, I'm afraid we do, we do have, we do have to have, they have to be registered voters, so we have to have colored cards, and...
All that, yeah. Who arranges to get all that here?
Well, isn't that a, well, the town voter?
Can you provide, that's actually, the little color code sheets?
I'm pretty sure, because you have, like, lots of...
Little, little sheets, but the town, who are the people who use the folks who, who are, who are voting, and... But like the little ballot sheets, I think, I think SAB provides those. I'm pretty sure, but I'll double check.
And actually, I was mistaken, though, we were, the second, the second deliberative session, you were working, you're on, to, to, to...
That's right.
Did I, I want to make sure, we keep trying to get that off to the public as much as possible, to the point that the town will be Saturday, and...
Yeah, this, take, you know, yeah.
Boy, that's, okay. So, so I suppose it's possible, and if we're, if we're going to the school, perhaps we'll get some of those, some of the ballot box, and so it's easy, I can carry that before, if the town voters want to be in the ballot box area, to not have to haul it back and forth. So I don't know who reaches out to, to, it would, like, be one of those. I think that's a, and, 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 and,[1748.48]
Uh, so if, if that's something that you would like to, uh, move forward on, exploring a drone policy, what I can do is, obviously, it's not cleaned up or anything. Uh, I can put it in our format for, uh, policies and bring it in on a future meeting for a first reading, average time, it'll be able to look at the entire process. But I thought before I did that, I would bring it for discussion.
So do you want to have a discussion now, or will you leave it for, uh, let's get the policies down and discuss it? Let's discuss.
I felt like it was a little, a little restrictive, um, because I knew that, you know, it's a little field, and that's kind of, you know, the, the, the planes and drones and stuff. So, um, I was thinking maybe we were to do something like this a little bit, to, uh.
Exactly. Yeah. And color, I think it was stated that it would be not a school day.
Right, if someone's come, like, four o'clock after dinner, and they're like, fly their drone for fun, I don't have a problem with that.
The nine-year-old show up here.
I think it's a very good point, and probably something stated, just not on the school events, it's really hard, it's school hours. I noted that there, this used to get, uh, for some reason, private property was called out, I'm not sure why, I think it called out, and, 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 and launched the private property. I, I don't know why it has to be private. And then we'll just, we'll go through the process and see if we build something. Interesting, and, and, and the school board association, that much further ahead, they now, they now have, they will now have a sample, roll the odds. Anything else you want to discuss?
All right, I'll clean that up then, and then put it on a future agenda for consideration. Um, the only other piece that I have for tonight is a new packet there, that the New Hampshire School Board Association has, uh, annually done student scholarships. Uh, and since it's open to any members of any school board, so if you have children or grandchildren that are, are either in college, or think of going to college next year, there's still one opportunity for, for the line of travel. So I just wanted to have a, a mention as well. And that's, we have our announcements.
Yeah, it's, and I, and, and thanks to Bob for bringing that up, um, and perhaps, I think we've all received something on it. Is there, I did not receive anything on it, because, so, so, Mr. Superintendent, that's, we didn't remind us, that's first of all, your children are, okay, no, not yet, not yet. All right, I'm just going to jump in here quickly before the principals update. Speaking of the New Hampshire School Board Association, Ted Cox, Donald, has been, was the longtime executive director of the New Hampshire School Board Association, and he died, just a few days ago. He had retired just over a year ago, and Derek Christina, his folks. Um, I just wanted to just say that, that, um, he and his wife just served tirelessly for so many years, and they always provided thoughtful, excellent service up to the New Hampshire School Board, including this one. They were, they were very helpful in every, so, so I hope you missed, and, um, sorry I didn't get to enjoy his retirement in a long way.
One other piece to that is the services are next week, so if anybody would like additional information on the services, shoot me.
All right, and now onto the principals update.
So vacation coffee buys, uh, what I didn't realize was, as soon as I got back, this was supposed to be in the SAB, so that's why I emailed to you, so I remember, uh, to get out of the pack. So I gave you a coffee as well. Just a couple of highlights of things that mark on there that have happened since I sent this out to you. Under the academia section, what I thought about doing, um, for at least the next couple of months, is to just give you some snapshots that teachers put out, um, either through their newsletters, or their Facebook pages. Uh, so I've cut and paste a few different items from a couple of grade levels there, just to give you a sense of what they're putting out there for families. Uh, I think they're the best resources we have to tell you what's going on in school, because they're working, it's organizing things. So there's three or four bullets there from, um, different grade levels. Uh, on the next page, I just want to publicly give recognition to our library media specialists and library community, for all the work they've done at the library. I know you both have had a couple of meetings in there, um, and that the evolution of the library since I got here, early July, to now, has been unbelievable. It's a much more welcoming space for young children to go, and staff to go. It's spread out more so that kids can work in small groups in different areas of the library, without being crowded, or stuck in between some tall stacks of books, so that they can really see where they are, what they're doing. So all of our tall metal stacks that serve the purpose are now going, um, they, some of them, I forgot their names, the town library, the four year olds, um, reaching out to them, and they were interested in, taking those off our hands. They, they are still amused, but the ones that are in there now, most of our kids can reach the front shelf rather than providing the shelves to be a book.
We had had a couple of meetings in there, a few transformations today, you know, just not how much lighter and developing than what you've got, the tall stacks are to me.
I just wanted to publicly recognize, you know, that was their vision, and, you know, that helped, they were able to make it happen. And. A couple of items not on the list that I wanted to let you know, I met with the chief of police, Chief of Sharon this week. He and I have been missing each other since before Thanksgiving, and I reached out, and, um, I said I had a couple of questions about, um, some laws that they had around reporting, um, state schools, violations, that kind of thing. So we just missed each other before vacation, and he finally came up with one of his officers. So we talked a little bit about that, and then, uh, the conversation was through this evening, and I know we had that conversation through the budget process, and he did reiterate that he is the person that is ultimately, you know, been responsible to go out to the houses, and knock on parents' doors, and see why kids aren't coming to school. So I asked him if that's what he wanted me to do, was to reach out to him first, and he said that he would like to, to do that for us. I explained that through the budget process, we did put a little money there, cases arose from different level, you know, possibly court levels, um, court level, actual resources, that we did have a little budget, but we talked about it earlier, so. Um, and then the last thing, we had, um, our monthly PTO meeting last night, so not in the calendar of events in my report, are some upcoming family events. They really want to, um, try to do what they're hoping for is monthly family events. Um, so for the next three months, we have a family event to invite folks into the building after school hours. So on January thirty-first, um, we are going to publicize an astronomy, uh, of our parents have a connection with a local astronomy group, um, I think it's, it's, I think it's, it's all of us. Um, but it's free of charge to the PTO, free of charge to families, um, they're going to come in, do a short presentation video, then they're going to take kids outdoors and, um, do different observations, for example, telescopes, and stars, a couple of installations. PTO is going to offer a bunch of, we do have a rain date, uh, rather than a snow date, since that's been happening a lot. And, um, so on February thirteenth, that is our rain date, and if we don't need it, that is a rain date, they're setting that up as a board games night for families to come in and do board games, it's a couple nights before February vacation. The next night is battle time today, so, you know, their clock was, you know, let's do a family night, that way tomorrow night would be considered. Uh, so I think they'll put out the information to families on whether or not, you know, they should bring games, but we're also going to offer some, um, people, some of our PTO members. Again, they'll have refreshments that, um, for, for, to, 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 and the last one that we've just started, this was, uh, sort of a great child, our literacy specialist, she got in with us. Uh, she approached me about doing a little literacy night, and getting the PTO to help, um, put it on. And she's just beginning to brainstorm different ideas that she has done in past experiences. So her vision is to have different stations set up, um, gym, a couple of classrooms, the library, have guest speakers to come and do a relab, and, um, she was saying, the community members, they can come in and do some readings of their favorite children's books, uh, some crafts around different literacy materials, so have the kids do actual hand-on projects. You know, some different types of events, and she reached out to the PTO, you know, to have that involved, because they'll give them a chance to publicize, um, themselves, well, they're really trying to get it going. So, and. Uh, the date is March twenty-first. We were trying to do it around, across America Week, which is the first week of March, but our school is just, we're kind of, so, I mean, um, the play is that week, um, so we pushed it off a couple of weeks, but it's still working. Uh, the last thing that, uh, they're trying to pull together is, and they've publicized, PTO publicized at the school today, and the PTO president publicized with all members, that they were approached about refreshments at the budget hearings. Uh, they used to do, um, refreshments at hearings or deliver sessions in the past, um, so they put out the call to membership to be, and be willing to bring in some different refreshments. It's, uh, in the lobby of the table, um, you know, that, and they're out, come, uh, your stack donations are accepted, you know, you see any issues around that, or permission to that.
It's something that, that has indeed been in place in the past, and then I think it ended up being not, it was, it was themselves, I believe, that stopped doing, it was certainly, I don't believe it was anything to do with, yeah, I don't remember, but it wasn't. I ended up doing childcare instead, so I got to do high concessions to, to childcare, it's more important, though, that's been happening. So is that how it happened? I, I know that sort of drivel of the way, it's, so, 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 the board has never had an objection, as long as the school has had no objection, because we don't know if it makes it messy, or spilled coffee, or donut crumbs. It might be good on a Tuesday night, though, if you're expecting people to come at six in the morning, you know, to have something to eat while they're here, it might get our people here.
Pizza would be nice.
There has been, there has been pizzas, and, and, and people, they were charging whatever it was, even dog supplies, and they were making pretty good money, that time needs to be served. Anyway, um, I don't think we have any, I think it's great, we didn't have any objection.
So this is the town here, and this comes out, and they're trying to pull it from the staff.
Oh, they're trying to do something with staff.
Yeah, but, um, I, we'll see how it goes, and, um, you know, some feedback, if they're interested in doing it in the school or in the session.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, you know, tell them, we didn't have no objections, just honestly. Excellent, no, I, uh, again, I'm, I'm very much enjoying the, uh, the principals update, I, I actually made note that I really liked the little snippets from, from master teachers, I, I am, I am, I also am sorry, with Secretary Powers, uh, Secretary Powers is left, uh, which is what we're on this, and, and I'm very much looking forward to hearing how they visit, um, to be all happy and all, so.
I can talk.
We have their, their, their. We have their email.
No, it's coming up in a couple of weeks. And a couple of events that need to be scheduled for the sixth graders going over. Or event that they were already in. The principal come in here with some students. We have to set up, we have to meet their stuff.
It's fantastic.
Yeah, it's getting, it's getting a little bit, that, that time that we've been doing before now.
So Nick Garvey has been sitting very quietly waiting. Megan Morton was excused this evening. She sent her sense of apologies, but Nick, you're on.
All right, so I didn't hear anything from Megan. She usually does sports stuff, or she's good at sports stuff and the college acceptance stuff. But I didn't hear anything, so I don't have anything about that as well. But really, it was, it's just been hard to lay back on, how much happened. Here the break, before break, in mid-December, we got back our PFTT scores for the freshman and sophomore students. And I think the way Marshwood does it is really nice. They have all the classes going, first class meeting in the auditorium. And not only they tell you what you got first score, but they tell you like how you can use that score to help you move towards and possibly like resume your resume for college applications or whatever you want to do in your life. So I feel like that's different than most other schools. In that they, they not only just give you the score, but tell you what you can do with it. Break happened. We were all waiting for it. And then now it's just done. I mean, last week we had three days and it's gone really fast after something. But midterms is coming up in a couple of weeks. And that would happen through the school year. It's crazy, it's crazy.
It is.
And then following Monday after midterms, we start second semester. We get all part of the classes. So that's very much it.
So I'm, I'm just seeing, I don't know if the term's going to be like finals week. Is it, is it supposed to then, finals work?
Well, finals is four days. It always will start on a Monday.
It's for finals, you said.
Right, for finals. And that will be four days, two exams on the first three days, and then one on the last day. And then also makeups on the last day. Midterms is the same setup, except it will start on Tuesday. And it'll start, it would always be the day after, Monday, Tuesday. And then we'll go on that Tuesday, and we go on Friday. With the same kind of setup, two a day, and four on Friday. The only difference though is midterms is not open campus, the finals is. So that open campus is kind of, you show up for your exam, you can do whatever you want. You're going to come back for your second one. And also for study halls, that means, say you have like, a study like your second exam of the day. You have to stay for that. Or the other, the first, you have to like still have to show up. For finals, it's different. You just show up, like you have your test period. You don't have to be in the first half of the day. And we tried to change that through student government. We like really pushed that. But it's actually, like, the school wants to do that as well. Except it's a slight state law that you have to go all those days. Because we need a certain number of school days. And the open campus days don't count as actual school days. So I guess those are like added on days. So.
So you think by terminal time, they know, they know we have like days in.
Yeah, by finals, say, we recharge 175 days of school. So they can just, they don't do an open campus, so they don't count as like the 175. But midterms is different, and they count those as extra students. So we try our best, but we're shut down.
Point is, you don't know until you try.
Yep. That's how it is with everything, which is good, but pretty much. We'll try to do something.
Be a shutdown.
I mean, administration usually has like a really good reason for why some things.
God knows what the administration is.
They can never think about it before we go into it. So we'll, we'll think we have a really good idea, and then we'll just get shot down so fast.
Keep trying.
Well, Tom, great. Welcome to the board.
No, but it's good. So I would say keep trying.
Student government is more like a, it's more like a club kind of thing. It's not, it's not elected at all. Just, you just like go and just have like the administration period where you just talk to other students about what they, uh, what their rules are, or what we're not doing. And then there's a whole different game elected.
All right, so it's essentially two camps.
Right.
Projections.
Yeah.
Is there pretty good participation in this group of government?
Yeah, I'd say there's 30, 30, so it's not. And it's not anything that's like required for anyone. It's just you show up. You can join whoever you want. So, and it's nice that you can have your voice heard, you know, having to give a big speech in front of the whole class or try to get elected or on the spot, so you can show up and take your place.
I think it's very, I'm a cloud in the 60s, so I still have to approach them forward. So any, any other comments from Nick or questions or thoughts to share with Nick?
I do have one more question about the district municipal idea. I brought it up way back in the paper, and I was wondering if there's any.
I think the board is all in favor, although it has to, it has to go through the school area to see if, to see if this must have been getting done. Well, um, which one, you reach out to someone?
It's ours.
I think, you're all, you're all getting your grades, so always get your. Um, or, or Nick, would you like to reach out to?
I could, I could definitely.
Maybe you and Megan could talk.
Oh, maybe it was Megan talking. Maybe somebody. So, do you remember what we're talking about?
To be honest, no.
So, I know. So Marshwood is known for its museums. And they get every grade involved, I think, right down to, I think sometimes they have something, kindergartners, upper grade, 12th grade. Every grade involved.
Yes.
And Nick brought forward the idea that, that if everyone was willing, especially the Marshwood folks when they was together, then perhaps going to grade school would be inviting into that in a certain way.
So I think what I would recommend, because we have, I think, the kids that are involved in drama here are heavily involved right now, because we do one a year. And our play is, we, we, March, March eighth event. So, and they're pretty heavily invested with time and practicing every day. But if there was something outside of that, that Marshwood would be willing to offer to our students, private, they'll pay massive law to families and kids.
And I think it's later, right? It's, was it this year?
Our start got a little.
It's already, it's already done, so it was in the fall.
Right, it's starting.
Yeah. It was, when I, when I was talking about it in November, it was like, that's right when it was going.
So for next year. So would you be willing to talk with the person at Marshwood and have them reach out to me? I think I would keep that bug in my ear to remember for next fall. And then as soon as school starts, if they're willing to offer that to our kids, then definitely love to have our kids fall. Just one more chance for them to get over there at an earlier age and see what Marshwood's all about.
Yeah.
Yes, and if you can just make the initial contact, right? Then, then they can talk.
Yeah.
Because it's like, it's very thoughtful, suggestions. And it may not work out, but it may. All right, it's early.
I have more questions.
Paul, they have trained. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Nick, appreciate it. I'll have to, you are welcome to stay, but I'll have to. Thanks, Nick, it's nice. All right, so moving on to the financial update. So we have Katie sent down the updated report to, to this year's, to this, this year's budget. They're in the middle of it. The good news just keeps coming.
I mean, really nothing exciting on the expenditure side. It's pretty, you know, pretty much the same. Bob and I did meet with Rich prior to holiday break, just to roll the lines, to see where we haven't spent money. And, you know, Rich is new, didn't, wasn't here when this budget was created. So we had to look at the lines to see where, you know, there's money and where we can spend it. So probably going to do that spend, you know? Get it going. For the revenue side, yeah, I had news, we estimated 35,000, and we're just, we're getting just over that.
I think it's very, very nice, very close.
Very good estimate.
Yeah.
Can I just chime in and clarify too? In the fall, I was saying no a lot.
Yeah.
And teachers weren't used to it. Because I had no idea what was budgeted for, and we had no idea what was going to be left coming over here. So, you know, for things that weren't necessary, they would just be nice to have to supplement or to replace something that maybe they didn't know for now. Like, I kept saying, no, come back later in the year. But now I've been going out and saying, you know, is there something that you need a little bit of light? And they, they come back and they're like, of course.
That's good. I guess that's. So any questions for the, for comments on the financial level? Katie, I wonder if you would, Bob, if you just comment on the, on the letter, but also accompany the listeners to the letter. What we're going to be, yes, like.
Yep, so every, so every year at the beginning of the year, they get an estimated sheet of what they owe us every month for the payment for the, and once the tax rate is set, because we return money and things like that, and revise it for the rest of the year. And it's done with that, so that's just the revised estimate, 12 hours on us. That's the actual.
No, it's the actual. Yep. And, and certainly in the, in the, in the number of years that I've been working with this, the money all goes to, it all, maybe it was going out. It was a pass. Now, just, just take into account what it was, that, that was under the town.
Yes, yeah. So once they set the tax rate, they give me that amount on the tax rate set sheet, and that's what it's based on. So this is just your, why I have this was sent to the town now that the payments have gone down. So.
Sure the tax rate happens, yeah, actually. For our own understanding, the tax rate that was set, the tax bill that we received in December is the 2018 tax rate. For 2018. There's an estimate, the estimated bill goes out in June, and then the tax rate gets set, and the actual, and, and all the makeup is done. And it's a tax bill, but it's highly. So just, just so everybody understands that we're always a taxpayer, applying the taxes, ever, any taxes. Just so we all understand. All right, good, I'm glad that you moved on to the current budget. And now for our, our budget that we will be bringing forward to the public shortly. So the budget is all set.
Yeah, I'd love to hear all your places tonight. New updated memo with the $15,000 change, as well as a new detailed budget with that change. In here is also the warrant articles and the new tax impact summary. So that way with the $15,000 change, so those are all new items for you to bring to mind.
Okay, you said you did have the tax impacted.
Yeah, there it is in the back. There's a summary page, and then there's the printout for each of the different articles, and what that is.
So we do have some action. An act out is my warrant articles and so.
I did send this off to our attorney today as well.
Oh, yeah.
So it's gotten her blessing.
Okay.
There were a couple of minor changes. Just on the top, when it says that Article five and Articles seven through, it said nine. It should be 11 because we added two articles. Yours are correct now, but I handed you out.
Okay.
But before, they, it said nine, the two articles we added. So I changed that to the 11. And then the only other article she changed was Article nine on the withdrawal study.
Yes.
It was basic wording that she changed. So it said, to see if the Rollinsford School District shall create a school administrative unit withdrawal study. She changed that to planning committee. And then underneath it said, to study the advisability of the Rollinsford School District. She changed it to feasibility. That's it. That wording, the original wording, we had gotten from, I think, Barrett Christina, School Board Association. So she just cleaned it up a little bit. Those were the only changes that she recommended, so.
Okay. All right, so these are all the warrants that we are looking forward, I think we can do them as a group. If that, if that's all right with everyone to, so what we have to determine is whether or not the school board is going to recommend them. Do we do it individually?
You might want to do them individually, because there's a couple you might be signing on.
Oh, right, right, sorry, yes, of course. Sorry, I, I was going to, I was. You're right. So let's, so let's start with the, with the budget itself. The, the new copy that Katie has given us has the $15,000 reduction that, that we introduced and then took effect.
I'll move to recommend Article seven as word.
Second?
Second.
Second from Erin, any discussion?
It's already, it's already.
It'd be Erin for five.
You've done that before. You have done that before, and it's true.
Yeah, so it's my way, where are we? Hold on.
To the one that wasn't there on my face, sorry. When we started the beginning, is that what you went in?
Why?
Jump around, yeah. I think we're so bored. All in favors, you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Article six is the.
It's changed since then.
Article six is the collective bargaining agreement. Again, it's the one we brought forward, so if you could have a, get a motion.
Make a motion to go forward with Article six. I think we'll, we'll recommend.
Second, please.
Second.
Second, Emily, all in. All in favors, you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Article seven, which has to do with, it has no, no effect on taxation. But again, we brought this one forward to put money into our tuition, regular education expendable trust fund. To our tuition trust fund.
Any motion to go forward?
Second. Discussion, all in favors, you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And the last money article is, again, no, no effect on taxation. But if we have money available, the group with additional $75,000 dollar building.
And a motion to bring our party forward?
Second. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Again, unanimous. Article nine, to see if the Rollinsford School District shall create a planning committee with the provisions that Katie suggested, I don't think we can. This is something that, that, that I feel is very important, and I think we can put recommend or not recommend on these, right?
You can, yeah.
However, I don't know if, if we want to put it on or not, because will it look? And so this, this is sort of a discussion. While we do strongly recommend doing this, is it going to confuse the voters in the ballot box? To say, well, why isn't the budget committee recommending this? And because it has no money attached to it, and then when you're sitting in that, standing in that booth and you have to come to any meetings, is it going to confuse them?
That's a very good point.
So that, that's the point, that's what I wanted to promote.
What's the other option then?
To leave, to just leave it on.
Just to leave it silent for the last two.
And, and to, and to handle it in the mail, or how, how much we really recommend it. And that's just a thought, I don't, just wanted to throw that out.
That's a good thought.
So we'll remain silent on that one, but we won't remain silent. We'll remain silent on this printed ballot, but not, not in real life. And then the petition warrant article, we have no reason to weigh in, so.
Do we need, do we make a motion on Article nine?
No.
Nope, because you're not going to recommend or not, you're just going to leave it.
Okay. And the petition warrant articles, I, I, I believe we remain silent on all the time. We didn't bring it forward. We, Bob did check in with the attorney on that. And as we have heard sometimes in the past, it is advisory only. It can be changed at the deliberative session if someone chooses to, to make changes to it, not, not the concept, not, not the actual thing they're asking for, where they could make some detailed changes. But I, there's, there's very little. Anyway.
And she did send it to me writing too, so I can have.
So if this Article 10 were passed as, as written, that would require the school board to see if we can negotiate a contract.
All right, so, so a couple. Yeah, a couple of things. Our, the way our contract is currently written, we can send our sixth graders at any time. So we don't have to negotiate a contract.
This article is advisory only, so if it doesn't, if it, if it passes or if it fails, that's going to be the guidance to the school board. And then the school board is going to have to have an inclusive discussion, either way, and decide what they want to do. But it's, it's advisory only. If it, if it passes, that will be the message to the school board to have a discussion about that. But, you know, you're right, you don't have money budget right now, so. But it is advisory only.
Yeah, so it's advisory. We don't have, we have not budgeted for this. Our, our budget does not cover sending an additional 25 students to Marshwood. That's a quarter of a million dollars. We don't have that in there. And, and, and the one teacher we might be able to pare down because of that, we need to cover that.
Surely they don't make a quarter of a million dollars? Wouldn't it be nice if they did, but they don't?
So, so it, so again, it's advisory, as Bob's been saying, we would, we have a, we will, should Article nine pass, which we strongly hope it does, a lot of things are going to be discussed, so.
You frowning?
Silent.
Let's take a frown.
Well, this is not, this is not English.
No, we've been talking.
We've been talking about this for ages now.
All right, so we, we remain, again, remain silent on that one. All right, so I think we're all set with those action items. Everyone else, another question?
I have heard about thinking maybe one of the ones should be.
So if, so if you're all set with the warrant articles, we could use some signatures tonight.
I brought them in.
Oh, excellent. All right.
Is that when we perform that page? Do you have my notes?
I have, I have originals to send you that don't say draft on.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. All right, so we're moving on to the first readings for, for a number of policies. Home education instruction and access to curricular and co-curricular programs, participation in public school activities by home educated charter and non-public school pupils, instruction resources and instructional resource plans. I'm not reading that very well. Access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home educated pupils, and student records and access. So have people had a chance to read through those? And are there comments or?
My favorite timing.
I didn't have any comments on this. I didn't have, I mean, that's what they're recommending, right? Is it, and then SBA?
Yes, I believe those are.
Well, that's what, yeah, I mean, that's what they're updating the policies to be.
And again, you're going to, if you approve those for a first reading, you're going to get another crack at them too. So you can read them if there's any suggestions.
I didn't see anything.
So that gets out of it. Good.
If, if that's the case, if perhaps a motion to accept the first reading.
I made a motion to accept the first reading of one, two, three, four, five policies. Just referred to.
Lots of seconds.
Yeah, lots of seconds.
Any further discussion? All right, motion carries. I'm sorry, to signify every, if. I'm sorry, to signify every, if, if.
Aye.
Sorry, we got that. Let's not get ahead of ourselves, so. I'll just say the moment, Katie. And now the second part, is the second reading of the others. I did check with Bob early this morning, when it occurred to me that we had made a small change to the IMDA, the patriotic exercises, and we had not seen that printed.
I was like, what's in here?
Or wasn't it, I had, my fault, then, my fault.
It's there, it's there.
Yes. It's after ILDA.
Okay, that was my, well, distortion, I'm sorry, my mistake, my, obviously, I didn't look as closely as I.
They're not really, it's in my package.
They're not real.
Oh, my gosh.
It's about the service pool meeting.
I got it, I got it.
I know.
And that did something change, that's exactly what we discussed, so is there further discussion on any of the second reading, because we really have an action item, we will act on each one, so.
I had one, but now I can't find it. The service animals.
That should be the very last one, I should, all of the patriotic exercises.
Oh, yeah, we lost, there was, there was just a typo at the beginning of the sentence of the service animal.
Just on your way.
Really?
You go along.
She said what, after ILDA?
ILDA.
I, I M G A, patriotic.
Yeah, you know, it was there, but you'll get it next time.
Oh, that first sentence.
This is the one you mentioned. Right, you, first, 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 first sentence?
Even Bob's got that.
No, right after.
Oh, yeah, first sentence, yeah.
Right, and where it says.
59 or 67.
Service animal for the first sentence.
That sentence is a little awkward.
No, that wasn't.
Okay.
Number five, sorry.
Five, the service animals.
Yep, there's just, it's just a typo.
Oh, all S, all.
There's much ado about very little, I'm sorry, number five. It should just strength those first two words.
Should just say that this is.
Good catch. I was sucked in about the part about the.
You did your worst, I say.
Wow. I was hoping that they looked good to me.
So people are sort of refreshing their memories, let's take them one at a time, this was an action item, to accept them, accept each policy as we go along, or not accept it as written. So the first one is the noneducational questionnaire surveys and research.
I make a motion we accept that policy.
A second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, you can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes. ILD dash R, protection of pupil rights amendment supporting forms. Amendment supporting.
I made a motion we accept that policy.
A second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. ILDA, noneducational questionnaire surveys and research.
I make a motion we accept that policy.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. IMDA, the patriotic exercises.
Make a motion we accept that policy as modified.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And the final one on service animals, IMGA.
I make a motion we accept this policy with the correction.
Do we have a second?
Yes, we did.
All right, discussion? Is that discussion?
No, no discussion.
Oh, okay. All in favor?
Sorry.
Didn't know if anyone was discussing or not.
Don't even worry about the service policies.
Excuse me, um, all in favor. All right, we're about to move on, but very quick, I apologize for this, I have my, I would like to go back very quickly to financial a little bit, and I wanted to discuss very briefly and get more approval, if possible, if we do agree to do this. We pay our district clerk the total sum of $50 to do the work of, that's been the pay for, I think about the last 20 years, or 30 years, or whatever. It is, I would say they do it anywhere from, up to 10 hours of work by the time they're done, taking the notes, transcribing the notes, verifying the vote, up till that. I would like to suggest that we, as a board, take action tonight to raise that pay, including this year, to $250.
It's just for this one, yeah, correct?
And certifying the vote on election.
Yes, okay.
I mean, if you want, it's certainly open to discussion, it's just a recommendation.
I think that sounds like a lot of hours.
It could be a lot of hours, and I think it, and they have to, they have to send it in to be published in the report and all those things, so.
It may get some incentive.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, we don't get the volunteers, really.
But it is an elective issue.
I know, but it's still, I mean, it's hard, you got people doing this stuff, year in, year out, and unfortunately, our town has done a good job of not paying those very well, so I'd be very, very much in support of something like that.
I agree. All right, then, could I have a motion saying that we, and it will be, again, we have a budget for it, but right now it looks like our budget is, can handle this, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the amount.
The district.
To the district clerk, the amount of 250 hours of services.
We have a second from Emily, any further discussion? So all in favor, you can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, so that motion carries, and that will be going forward, and again, it's not in the coming budget either, but we will, yeah, and the other thing is, we have talked about childcare, and we have talked about paying for childcare, if there are teenagers or who are doing it for community service, they will not, but do we want to try to set, for either, for either the adults that are overseeing, I know we've had some people step forward in the staff, and said they'd be willing to help out, and I know that we have, and I know that some board members here are working on making sure we have some teenage childcare as well, and so, do we want to try to think about a payment, a payment for them, so that it's, so that we've really thought it through, and we know what we're going to be paying for?
Are you talking about for now or for the future?
For the deliberative session, for this coming deliberative session, and at the, and to establish sort of a baseline, you know, amount that we might pay per hour.
I feel like, yeah, I just don't know, like, how many people do we need for, you know, I mean, if there are 20 kids there, we need a few.
If there are three kids there, we don't need.
Right, and I, I'm not, I'm just thinking it through, I'm not saying that this is a reason to not pay people, I'm just trying to figure out in my brain how it would work, and how we budget for it, and, you know.
Who are they actually working for, and all this, it's like, I think maybe we could, as a board, sort of, kind of think this through, for like, the future, kind of set it up a little bit more structured.
It would be nice to have a grown-up slash staff member be kind of in charge, and I would say, like, giving that person some form of stipend would be a wonderful thing, and then if we had teenagers that are volunteering for community service hours, then, you know, they have a supervisor to sign off on that, and then I feel like something that's structured like that, I would go, because particularly, if the staff in this building is coming in here on their time off to help out the school board, I would like to acknowledge that, with some form of generosity.
All right, so what I'm hearing is that we, that certainly, if staff are sort of, they may be volunteering their time, but we would like to see that they are also recognized with something else. Rich, you want?
Just a recommendation, if you're considering this for this year, I would recommend at least two adults, because if you limit it to one and an emergency happens, then that one is gone, and you're left with, you know, older kids supervising younger kids.
And to be clear, the staff here has been incredibly generous, and we certainly, and if they are willing to do that, that's fine, otherwise, we, and we are, we are planning to provide childcare, and I think we're planning to do it with or without adult supervision, correct, I mean, that's our, was our goal, and so, and staff has been incredibly generous, but we also know that it's their time, and thank you for the idea, if they're too, and we should, and we will.
Yeah, I don't think.
But at this point, not look at being any of the teenagers at all, it would be a volunteer choice.
Yeah, I can definitely see my dream, like, I'll go to the community service, I'll take the money, I got you. I got you. I mean, he's wonderful.
All right, then we will, we will sort of see how everything goes.
I am not sure how we, what is that. I agree, I was kind of thinking we might place some more help, for sure.
More help to kids.
Yeah, right. We get 20 teenagers.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting point, and maybe we can formalize the wonderful adults and staff that come in and take on this role, and while it may seem very, we don't want to do anything, we want them to realize how valuable it is to us.
Yes, and how we are for us.
So we'll figure all that out as we move through the next few weeks, okay, into that, so, and maybe it'll be retro, you know, discuss it at our February meeting after it's over, and that way we know what's happened, and who's been here, what's gone. Okay, thank you for all that. All right, now we will move on to old business. So we're going to review the, we talked about reviewing, reviewing the board goals, and this seems like a good time to do it, so we actually, some of them are actually handled, and some of the things that we've been doing as we go along. So our board goals, which are on our agenda, we had four of them, we did not necessarily order, put them in any particular order, but they were all important to us. So let's just take the first one, which was to support the superintendent and principal to ensure a successful transition, sharing institutional knowledge, that would be us sharing our institutional knowledge with the new administration, communication availability, and making sure the board, the board is available to communicate things that need to be, and to provide clear directives from the board. So I think it's probably appropriate to ask Bob and Rich to chime in at this point as to how they think, since a lot of this was to the board to be available and do things.
Sure, I'll be happy to start off, and I can, and over Rich for his perspective as well, but quite frankly, coming into a new position, the, one of the most challenging pieces is the institutional knowledge, and, you know, trying to find out how things have been done in the past, and how things were developed, and what the processes were, procedures, and I've felt very happy with the support that I've gotten from the board, and anytime I've had any questions, or, you know, you've been very patient with me if I have to stop a meeting and ask, you know, for a little bit of history involving something. And I know Rich and I have had conversations about certain things that have come up, going, you know, where can we find the answers to this and gain a little history on this, so I've felt very supported, and I appreciate that. Communication and availability, I've found that, you know, when I send out emails or phone calls, very available, so that's much appreciated, to provide clear directives, we set the goals in the beginning of the year, and I find that at the meetings, when there's a task to be done, I've asked clarifying questions and been very good about that. One of the things I've mentioned to Judy when we had a discussion this past week was, one thing that I find very difficult with school boards is when you table things, and when you repeatedly table things, and you're very good at not doing that, so I appreciate that, because I've worked with boards before that have repeatedly tabled things, meeting after meeting after meeting, sometimes because it's a difficult decision to make, and it never gets easier, it just creates more problems. So that's one thing that I've appreciated, that, you know, we don't table a lot of things, if we have something that's a difficult decision, you have the discussion, you make a decision and move on, so that's certainly one that's to appreciate.
Thank you.
No, I just echo a lot of what Bob said, the one thing that reminds me of, like, just
in last week's newsletter, the staff, they reminded that we be patient with myself and Allison in the office, because we're still on our first year, we're still learning, and the staff have been great about educating us, and, you know, letting us know upcoming events or traditions that have happened that are important to the building, and the people in the building, and how things operate, and Bob calls me to the question, I might not have the answers, but I know who to go to in the building to find out. So my resource has been Bob, more than you folks, but I know that it goes up to you from him when necessary, and I'm very cognizant, you know, a majority of his responsibilities has so much work, but he's been very available when I need him, and knowing that if he doesn't have the answer, that you're available to him, so it's been a very relaxing time for me to come and sit in front of the board and speak to you about what's going on here. I'm not always wondering, you know, what have they got up their sleeve for me tonight, which is.
Well, I can change that.
But it's, you're direct with us on what you need us to do, which is, I like, I like to know what the expectation is, otherwise we're always guessing, hoping that it's the right thing, and that's not fair to us.
Well, yeah, and certainly, we don't want anyone guessing, always ask, and you indicated that you would in the beginning, so it's good. Board, any board comments on this?
This is like the table.
Thank you for that feedback.
So the second goal was consistent budget communication throughout the year, and this was communication from, again, our new business administrator, relatively new, we've known Katie forever, but, but she's relatively new to the business administrator role, and so one of the, and to have the monthly reports at the board meeting, and I'd like to thank both, I know Katie and Bob both worked on the format, on the things that were coming in, and I think it becomes easier and easier to understand every time we, and having the, your narrative in the beginning each month is very helpful. Other folks?
I agree, I'm so agreeing, thank you. Yeah, and I would also just like to, once again, point out the amazing work that they did on the presentation for the Budget Committee, it was the clearest it's ever been, and I have been shocked by how easy I've had it with the Budget Committee, and it is thanks to the two of you, and I sincerely appreciate it, so, thank you.
Well, I've got to say, coming in as a, well, in any superintendent position that I've done, one of the scariest things is to not know where the financials are, and be guessing, you know, where you're going to end up, and if the numbers are right, and I never have to worry about that with Katie, because she's outstanding, so that's, selfishly, I really appreciate that.
So we seem to be moving, moving forward with that one pretty well. The next goal that's listed was to find a way to address paraprofessional compensation inequities, to make it a board agenda item and discussion, which we've been doing, to make it a focus of the collective bargaining agreement negotiation, and to encourage. make it a focus of the collective bargaining agreement negotiation, and to encourage care of representation at the negotiation table. So I'd like to thank the negotiating team, because we did make that, I believe, a center point of our negotiations. And just tonight, we are directing the superintendent to reach out to the union to have the union speak if they care to, to the collective bargaining agreement, so I think that's also sort of a part of our commitment to becoming a team, a real team, working together, union and the board. Other comments on that, maybe from the negotiating team or from other folks? I think we can clearly say that we are pleased that we were able to address, not as much, not as far as we would like to go with the paraprofessional inequities, but we made a big step toward them with this collective bargaining agreement, and we very much are working toward getting it passed.
I agree, and we said very well.
I just want to echo that, because I think it's a really big step, because you've got, I can't tell you the difficulty in hiring paraprofessionals and teaching staff below, if they're not on schedule. I've gone through that in other districts, and there's nothing more unsettling than sitting in front of somebody that you know you want on your staff and saying, well, you know, it's going to be this figure, but this figure's in the CBA, however, I need to take you back three years, and this is what you're going to get. So, you know, to handle that and get everybody on step for the paraprofessionals is really good stuff.
Any other comments from the board on that? The last one is, you know, basically to continue to work with town boards and committees to pool resources, find ways to measure savings and things like that. I think one of the things I have, is that Dick has been doing this all along, that Dick has formed relationships with the road agent, and, you know, the library, and every place he needs to form. So it sounds like that's going forward.
If you'd like, I've got some examples of that.
Sure, sure.
Would you like me to just quickly go through these? Because this is, this is one area that personally I felt that we, I've lagged on, because I haven't gotten to a select a meeting, and I just haven't had time to do that. But in looking at some of the things that Dick's already done, and some of the things that your school's already done, and cooperative services for the town, just a few reminders, the town provides things like snowflowing and sanding, and the use of the transfer station for hauling some brush off, fire departments visit every year, and the police department visits the school regularly. RGS provides space for the after-school program, indoor and outdoor, some storage space, space for summer rec, local sports teams often use the facility at no charge, space for town and annual district meetings, space for other community members to utilize the building from time to time, space for the police sponsored by the rodeo. And RGS also takes field trips to fire station, police station, town hall, water and sewer, Wentworth House, so a number of places around town. And then, you know, some future opportunities perhaps, sharing things like mowing equipment, facility director expertise, which sounds like Dick's been doing that already anyway. So, you know, there have been a number of ways that you are doing that, I, again, I'm using my knowledge of other communities, there are other communities that I've worked in that it's been very separate, and that the town does this, and the school does this, and we're not crossing over, and I don't see that in a voluntary, so that's, it's pretty refreshing.
And we've been bundling our oil for a number of years.
That's true. So any other board comments on any of our goals, or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's sort of measuring, I'm just looking for, our last, measuring savings, I don't know, and I guess, like, oil, I guess you can, you know, with a saving you can separate it, but I guess we'll just kind of have to keep that out of our mind if we want to actually start measuring.
All right, then we will set. So also under old business, oh, community connection, so talking about, so we did, we were able to get something up on the town website, the SAU website of, for the, was that just this week? It seems like a lifetime ago. It seems like a lifetime ago.
I wrote Monday via email and Facebook and the town website to spread the word about the upcoming dates, and especially the fact that the February 5th deliberative session is a Tuesday evening.
Yes, we do have to keep saying that to people, to ourselves and to other people.
Yes.
So the other things that we, this is our last meeting before the deliberative, and so we should chat just briefly about whether or not we want to have a handout at the deliberative session, a mailer, a handout, I'm thinking, well, maybe a handout, I don't know, but I'm assuming that we're probably going to do a mailer for the vote, because that's a long, that's over a month between the time they go to read anything about the budget and the thing, and then the voting, so probably a mailer makes sense for March. But I don't know if you want to do anything further than we've already done for the deliberative.
Part of me thinks a little highlight surreal would be helpful, but I don't know if, I mean, people aren't going to the meeting, they're very good at highlights, really.
Right, that's right, and so, yeah, so a handout doesn't necessarily make much difference, right. And are we planning also to have those, will we have to start this one, to, yes, remember we talked about doing a full page instead of the two, because you wanted it bigger, right? No, no, that's, no, no.
Those were full page on there.
No, 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 I want the projected one to look, I don't care, the printed one to be as small as it needs to be.
Okay.
The printed one was fine, it's the projected one.
The projected one is full page, all right.
So we'll just, we'll just change the font.
You have to change the font, or two pages for each, sorry. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
We'll see, we'll see how big.
How big I want it.
We've one letter on it.
Downhill. Downhill.
So I'm so glad, I'm glad we made that.
It's not printed, I can't get that.
Yeah, I got it.
Wow. It was a little small, but I was.
See?
Because I sent you, we were trying to save paper, remember?
And I had no idea what you were talking about.
Okay, I'm glad we said, I hope my last one.
Proves again that communication is a fragile art.
We're going to have a packed house, right? It's very, it's literally all I got to can't write.
You're going to do it, you think you'll?
Well, I will. Just be optimistic.
Okay, it would be nice to have that.
So the only thing that might be good for a handout is sort of a brief, maybe FAQ or bullets about the SAU withdrawal, because I think it's very confusing, if people have something they can look at right away to sort of understand how it works, then we can maybe spend less time explaining the whole, the whole process, and we need to sort of write that up anyway, so it might be good to have that for the deliberative session as a backup.
Yeah, we can put that together.
All right, you could put one together, and you could, to me and Erin, anyone else have time to do editing?
I started.
You started already?
I'll send you what I have.
Okay. And just keep it copied.
Sure.
Because I feel it's lying in the notes.
You're always cool.
I know, you do, you're so good, so good about that, thank you. All right, so that makes, I think that you're right, that's the one that actually had the most questions during the budget committee presentation, and had nothing to do with budget committee, but, so it seems confusing, and you're right, and then, because there's the petition warrant article, it's going to confuse people further.
Right, I think the question a lot of people had in the webinar, voting on, moving or whatever, the whole idea of voting on a committee that's going to research, and.
Yeah. I think people forget that when we withdrew from the area agreement, it was exactly, it was pretty much the same process.
Yeah, yes.
Except that at that time it was a joint, it was a joint committee, Somersworth and Ronsford were on the same committee, and they had votes, they had voted something whether or not we could withdraw, maybe, yeah, so it was a very, it was a very interesting process. Again, that's six, seven years old now, so I know time flies. All right, so I think we're all set with that, then, anything else that you were?
Do we want to plan to post it?
I mean, we're not going to. Well, I think if that FAQ was ready, we could post that before, before the deliberative session.
And I have a bunch of documents already on our website, so.
Okay, we, those should, have they been sent to, they should also go up on the town website, so I think they go, they go to Tia, and so I think she gets them all. And if you would just let me know when they're, when they're gone, so I can be checking for them, and totally check them, so. Yeah, those need to be available, and in the past, have we had hard copies available places, so?
And I'll bring them too to the deliberative, yeah.
There'll be some here, but do we have some available ahead of time? I can pick some up and bring them to you.
I have to drop the warrant, I'll find any of them, most original, and town hall, I can bring some back, so maybe same night.
All right, and if you leave it up there, I'll grab it, you can take it, I'll write it, so. Okay, thank you. Anything else then for making everything as public as we possibly can? Okay. All right, then, we're on to our last action item here, which is the 2019-2020 school calendar, I did not. Whatever, look on, whatever, look on, look on, look on, okay.
You have a draft in your packet, and a little while ago I spoke about some of the challenges with institutional knowledge. If you've ever done school calendars, they are different everywhere, and there's very little consistency from district to district throughout the state, so that it's always a challenge to put together. The existing calendar for this year has 185, 177 student days and 185 teacher days, and one of the things that I was looking at when I put this together, in your collective bargaining agreement, it says the teachers shall be employed 187 and a half days, and but no less than 185 days. So I was a little confused as to why you had historically settled on the number that you settled on. So this particular calendar has 179 student days and 187 staff days, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I put it in there for discussion, and wanted your feedback on the calendar.
So discussion? I know that one of the things we always hear from administrators and teachers themselves is that they always want more instructional time, so I don't know if there are objections to that, but it's something that we've heard often at sitting at this table. So, you know, certainly willing to hear what people have to say about that.
So are we questioning whether, I mean, the students are 179 days?
In your existing school calendar, students are 177 days, and this, by adding two student days, would bring it to 179 days per student next year.
And then, and then keeping the professional development days and other things that are not student days, right?
The same.
Yeah, keeping that the same, then, which is a.
As far as, as far as start times, PD days, I try to mirror the existing calendar for next year.
So does this also include snow day buffers?
Well, the state likes to identify, likes each district to identify a number of snow days, and typically it just means the whatever's left in June. So, you know, if there were, if there were two snow days, then we typically lengthen the school year by two days at the end of the year. If we were to have a miserable year and have, let's say, eight or 10 school days, then we would have to have some discussions as to, you know, will it fit, or by the end of June, or do we need to do something creative? Now technically, the state of New Hampshire, it used to be by 180 days, and then they went to 180 days for a set number of hours, and now, really, the only thing the state of New Hampshire cares about is the number of hours. So the days themselves, you can have 177, you can have 180, whatever the hours are that fulfill the time requirement.
And many of us here may remember on the board that for the past couple of years when we had, we had had, I think we had eight snow days that all came in March, February to March, and just last year, because I have it here in front of me, we had, in April, we changed the school day to start earlier, and, and later, in order to get the instructional hours in that you get to get in, to satisfy the state requirements.
The other thing that this allows you, if you look, you've got a teacher workshop in March, you've got a teacher workshop in May, if you should get behind on snow days, one of the options would be to make those into student days to assist with getting the time in a little bit earlier. You certainly could, you know, February's a little early, but, you know, could do that.
It's early, plus we haven't had much in the way of.
And there's always, like, you know, if you get into the point where you have many, many snow days, you can lengthen your school day, you can go on a Saturday, you can, you know, there are other options. You can go on the February or April vacation, I'm not suggesting that any of those are good ideas, but those are options.
And so just to clarify, you didn't necessarily, you sort of started from scratch, you didn't look at the existing calendar and say, well, let me make it look just like the existing calendar, you said, let me see what the contract said, let's see what.
Well, I mirrored, I mirrored it off the existing calendar for this year, but then I was reviewing in the contract, and I found it curious that we were at 177 days typically.
For instruction.
Yeah, so I reviewed the contract, and I called Rich, and that's one of the discussions that we had, and I believe he had some feedback from the teachers. And then I, for discussion purposes, because of the content, the language in the contract, I added two more instructional days.
Gail, will this be a good time to invite you into the conversation?
Yeah, I'm looking at a draft of October 9th of 18, I'm not sure if that's the same draft.
Yeah.
That has the last student day on June 18th, which makes 180 days.
No, I've got one on June 17th, but I think the one that you have.
November 4th.
The mistake on that one is that I was unclear on the November 21st and November 25th student length conferences.
Yeah, so they're full student days plus additional half days.
That's what I missed.
For the professional staff.
That's what I missed, that's why, originally I did have it on the 18th, but that's an additional day, because you've got two half days for student length conferences, see what I'm saying? So the end, the last day would be on the 17th of June.
Okay, just please, no, sorry, so 179. Just realized the last, when the teachers' contracts, individual teacher contracts have come out, not just this year. come out, not just this year, it's mutually agreed that is number three, section A, the school year is not to exceed 185 days devoted to school educational work to July 1st through 30th. It's not just this year that is signed, it's not just the year before. Let's go back as far as 2000, 2001 with Denise Knoll signing it. So for the past 19, 20 years, our contracts have always said not to exceed 185 days.
Right, because technically that, I mean, that's correct. I don't, I hadn't, I didn't have the history on why or how it was done. What I was going by was the collective bargaining agreement. And the CBA dictates, I mean, yes, if it, if any of those contracts could have included 187 and a half days or, you're right, 185 days by your CBA. So I'm not, I'm not real sure why there's a range.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. And our representative says, you know, if you've known that, that could have been addressed possibly to this negotiation that's going to have to be looked at in the future because it's just.
Yeah, it's a little fuzzy because it's, yeah, I'm used to, I'm used to collective bargaining agreements saying it's either 185 days or 187 days or whatever the number is that's negotiated by.
I like being the nurse. I don't like, I didn't major in political science. This is not my, I like being the nurse. I like everybody happy. But I just, I just realize, you know, it says up to 187 and a half days. So that, you know, and this calendar that you said ends on the 17th needs that. So I'm just, we have to take caution when the teachers go to sign their contracts that they, you know, if they sign 185 days, what's the deal with the other 200 days?
Well, the contracts, the individual contracts that you get annually, that those change every year. I mean, the salary changes every year, the track changes every year.
But the average is the same for 20 years.
Yeah, the days on them have stayed the same for a long time and that's very interesting.
So why that wasn't addressed in collective bargaining agreements over the last decade, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, no, seriously, that's.
Other, other comments you wanted to, or concerns you wanted to express?
The copy that I was looking at would have put us over that collective bargaining agreement.
Right, it should be on the 17th.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Clarification all around, even if the contracts have been signed like that. I've signed a few myself, so, yeah. And not, I haven't bothered looking at the days because I just, yeah, you never sign a contract without reading it, obviously. Obviously. So other comments and questions from the school board on the calendar?
Another question, do we have the same amount of professional development days this year as we've had in the past?
Yes, it's the same.
And those are pretty well spelled out also in the contract. Because they are, they are paid, they are paid days for the teaching.
Yeah, for some reason I was feeling that we'd switched from the, because they're not yearly release to no longer release. We have one per month.
I think one, is that true?
I think that's when we went to that 177 student day as well. Because they're full, yeah, they're full, eight full professional days. Except that the November half and half makes none of those days.
That's what I missed first time around.
So then are we saying that the school year, then you go beyond, too much beyond there? You're saying that we go over the days, like if snow days.
A snow day is not a school day. So technically, teachers are not paid for snow days.
Right.
A snow day is like a Saturday. And it's just a non-day.
Of course, we know in reality it doesn't work that way. But, but in, in, in contract speak, yes.
And then in the contract, we cannot go past a certain date in June?
No, in the contract, we can't go past, we can't go past, well, that's state, in the contract, we can't go past June 30th because that's the end of the year. So I want starts a whole new year. So, and, and, and also historically, at least for the past number of years, we have always worked closely with administration and the staff to find a way to meet the hours without running into that last meeting. We really worked very hard not to go into the last meeting for many different reasons. Plans and family plans and students, no, our students necessarily, our students, John and everything. Oh, but other, other concerns, questions, thoughts?
It seems like a runway for all.
And I know that we've, so we've kept the, I see that we've kept the vacations aligned with Marshwood's. At some point, did we, did we talk about aligning a professional development day or two with Marshwood? Was that, did we talk about?
At Summersworth. At Summersworth for nurses, guys, PE people.
From, 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 one of you, it's good to fit and work with some colleagues every now and then, right? And has that, again, the board's not waiting, you know, we want to make sure your needs are met, so it's been happened.
If the August day is March day at least and October lineup.
I met with the superintendent of Dover, Barrington, Marshwood. And we, Northwood, Nottingham, and we talked about school calendars and we tried to get them close to each other and tried to mirror some of the professional development days. We were successful in a couple of spots and unsuccessful in many spots because of, you know, you've got a main calendar, New Hampshire calendar, you've got different wording in your collective bargaining agreements. So we got them closer, about as close as we can get, I think.
But that's a good step. I mean, that's a, a good step. So this is an action item for us to approve the school calendar if you are so willing and want to approve the school board. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, let's move on. All right, future dates, so we have a lot of dates on the calendar here, most of them we know, many of them, we've heard them. So we have our deliberative session Tuesday evening, the 5th of February. We have a snow date for the following Saturday if necessary. Valentine's Day, we will have our next Rollinsburg board meeting. We vote on the 12th and of March. Then there's the board meeting the 14th. I mean, new members need to be sworn in in between that time. We do have one seat up and the signup period for all of our outstanding clerk, treasurer, moderator, oh, I'm going to remind Charlie, I'll, we swing by and sign up if he's going to continue and one school board seat. The signup dates are January 23rd through February 1st, about a 10 day span. And so on and so forth.
At the SAU office?
At the SAU office. We will keep them out of the meeting.
Give me $2.
It's going in the pay.
No, it's me.
Zero. Oh, hey, how about that?
It's a bargain.
Zero dollars.
It'll be published in the Fosters on Monday.
That's what it is.
One of the things that is changing is that starting in February, our school board meetings will be held in the library permanently in order to open up the gym for any other community events, particularly basketball practice going forward. I would also just, I would suggest, I don't, I don't know how big the group is for PTO, maybe see if they don't, if they need to meet in the gym, that's one thing, and maybe maybe use another group too, just so we keep this space available for sports teams if they need it. But I mean, again, that's up to the, you know, we don't weigh in on scheduling the gym and stuff, but try to keep it as open as possible for community teams.
Right now, it doesn't conflict.
Okay, that's good then. All right, we do have non-public, but before that, we will get closing comments from visitors.
Tracy Lawrence, I just wanted to chime in on the sixth grade thing that's on there. I wanted to remind the community that it's more than just the 10,800-ish tuition that we're paying per child, it's transportation, it's special ed, it's all kinds of stuff. So it's, you know, 15, 16, whatever cost per child. So it's not a quarter of a million, it's more like a half a million or whatever the kids may be for those 25 kids. It's a lot more than just the tuition, that's just the basic. The 10, 8 is just the tuition, not all of the awesome stuff that is offered at. So that's just my input there. There's more costs than just tuition per child. I was really happy to hear that any handouts or FAQs, we were talking about placing, let's get them up online, let's get them around to the community because hopefully this will be a full gym. But if not, you know, for the people to get the caps in the media also is great. As for the, for the childcare staffing, if you can schedule that, if you can set that up, if you can guarantee that the staff will be here, adults or two adults, there'll be a lot more young families that will feel comfortable because right now everyone's like, we're the beach out here, we're the not beach out here and that kind of stuff. So it's kind of like, bring the staff, children will come, that type of thing, staff, adults or whatever. I think that if there's a reliable childcare option for the bigger meetings, I think that more young families will feel more comfortable, in a sense, safe to bring their children and know that it's a reliable thing whenever it's being offered. So that's my input. Because I know as a parent, that's how we feel. In the past, it's been we're the beach out here, we're the not beach out here. And teenagers in that are wonderful, but it's good to have, to know that it's not just seventh, third, eighth graders watching young kids or high school kids, you know, we have that type of thing. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public input? All right, thank you. Any board comments?
Do we want to talk to Rich more about, we're trying to see if in fact there are staff members that are interested?
Well, I believe, I believe Gail has stepped forward as a volunteer.
For the deliberative.
For the deliberative. And, and perhaps another staff member or are you not sure about that?
I haven't asked any others yet. I will make sure I have another.
All right, and, and I know that, I think the rest of the board members here are working on at least getting some helpers, getting, making sure that there are at least a couple other folks there. So feel free to chat with each other. And thank you very much. I think it will make a difference to be able to say that.
Maybe I don't. Or something.
Anything else from board members? All right, then thank you very much. We will have a motion to win the non-public under seat. Motion for a non-public. We'll see if we can run a non-public. David. Judy Nelson? Yes. Tom Coons? Emily Leach? Andrea Anderson?
Yes.
Erin Cavan?
Yes.